I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for June 5, 2019. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? We always like to start with something good, and I'm going to ask Courtney to come up and talk about your graduating class for this session.
Good evening. We have another session of the Citizens Leadership Academy graduating this evening. A few of them were able to make it tonight, and it was one of our smaller classes, but what we lacked in quantity, we certainly made up for in quality. They were very interested, so if you can just come to the front when I call your name. Jane Sprany. Joseph Stafford. Dustin Peckert. And then we did have five that I wanted to acknowledge that weren't able to be here this evening. Michael Carvalho, Michael Paulus, Manny Paez, Jason Pratt, and Melissa Pratt. Thank you for studying the last 10 weeks.
Okay, infrastructure. Yep, infrastructure. Vice President Colton.
Yes. In our meeting, Parks and Rec, we discussed Pollock Park, and they're still having some issues with environmental testing and that type of thing. As we know, the Spray Park is going to be opening June 10, approximately, hopefully. They had some maintenance issues to take care of. The Ashbourne Riverfront Park are really destroying the trees, the ash trees, so they have to come down, and I think some of our guys are going to be having to do that. Public Works, I guess pavings to start soon. We're hoping for help from Governor Wolf with his infrastructure proposal, and for some of the projects that need to be done in the borough. And we have new lighting on the Hanover Street Bridge, which us and North Coventry went together to take care of that. I think we'll also be putting some flowers on the lamp poles. Ellen and I, they're, as far as the, I can't even read my writing. Okay. It's been very busy. Everything, inspections are running fine, and they're very busy. And that's about it.
Very good. All right, thank you. And now we have Ms. Lee Clark giving us the economic development. Evening.
Good evening. So I was so anxious to get this report to you. I understand that this is supposed to be on Monday's agenda, but I'm going to take just a couple of extra minutes. So the annual reports are in front of you, the printed materials, and I also didn't want you to go into the beginning of summer days without your sunglasses to wear to every event and outside the borough. So please, everybody, just ask for extra pairs to the rest of the time.
I told you, my granddaughter's love.
Oh, I thought this was a free. Sorry. Next year, next year. All right. So I just wanted to go over a few things with some business statistics of what was happening in 2018. So you can see that the borough in at 5.5 miles, we know that there are roughly 22, 500 residents. Of those residents, 11,109 are employed residents, and there's a labor participation rate of 68.1 percent. In 2018, from January 2000 to December 2018, 14 commercial properties sold within the borough, and these 14 properties sold for a total sale value of $2.8 million. The average residential home sale price in 2018 was $111,000. It is an 11 percent increase from the previous year, and the average commercial property sale price in 2018 was $108,4005. In this first, almost first half of the year, we are trending increases in both categories. So we wanted to do 18 and 18. You will notice that there are 18 new businesses. They are not businesses that dealt with businesses that are already in the borough that are in growth mode. So in your packets or in your booklet, you'll see companies like Turn Five. Turn Five was already located in Circle of Progress, but they moved to an adaptive reuse space, which was the old Sabalot, and they are more than doubling their workforce. So they are noted in there, but they are not a new business in the borough. The ones listed here, the 18 and 18, are new businesses to the borough, and they are highlighted throughout those books of the annual report. We wanted to show you some of the entrepreneurs that have moved into the borough. Doned Envy, Premier Data Management, Zippy Shell, Samana, Holistic Center, and Contrast Neils. All of them are very different, but all of them are very entrepreneurial, and all of them are employing people within the borough. As we have talked over and over again, 2018 was the year of qualified opportunity zones. We have not a project that has taken specifically advantage of it, but it has created an awful lot of interest in Keystone Boulevard Project, as well as the Life Sciences Incubator Hub that is slated for the BB&amp;T Building to start design and engineering within the next couple of weeks. We did receive DCED funding for that. I want to remind everybody that of the QOCs in Montgomery County, we have three out of the four. So, moving forward, of course, there was a lot that happened in 2018, but the focus for PAE, myself as the executive director on our board, is really looking to the future of 2019. The areas of focus through the rest of 2019 is that Life Sciences Incubator Hub. I was at the Life Sciences National Conference, which is in Philadelphia all week, which brings people from all over the world, and spent time talking to a lot of people, including the governor, and talking to him about the Life Sciences Incubator, and thanking him for support for nominating the QOC, as well as producing the funding that is so important to get the project started. Keystone Boulevard Road Extension, $5 million bill. We have to have that happen. That's what makes that development go. It will be a case of finding the right developer and development with those public dollars. The best-case scenario would be there would be enough public dollars outside the borough and West Pottstown Township going into that. I don't know that that is likely, but I think we can get it pretty close, and then we can go back to the developer, whoever ends up being the end developer for that project, to fill it in. We certainly have done a lot of advocacy. We've had Representative Topol out there. The county commissioners are aware of it. We had Senator Mensch out there. We have Representative Pennsy, who is the Transportation Secretary. We've had a conversation with him about it, and I am hosting Congresswoman Dean in a few weeks, and hope to talk to her about the project as well. If everybody brings a little bit to the pot, it's not a huge lift. So that's certainly something that we will continue to advocate for. Keep the trust for interest is out there. There is a lot of interest in the project, and I hope to have something by the end of the year to report to you. Circle of Progress is updating. For those of you that have been around town for a long time, you know that PAE, that was really a flagship project for many years ago, back in the 80s. PAE was responsible for getting that project up and running along with the airport, and it has been a real diamond for the borough for many years. It has increased in business sense, and now we have Sly Fox, and boat races, and Manitani, and several different opportunities out there. But it is within an opportunity zone, and we would like to find a way to update it. I like to think the 80s were just last year, but apparently they weren't. They were many years ago, at this point, decades, I guess. So we would like to find a way that we are able to certainly do some updating up there, funding, and to do some creative funding. So we're just starting that process to look what might be available. We did have a meeting. It's certainly nothing that's going to happen, but some of the ideas that we're kicking around is getting a production up there, a feeder production, something that would just be an event. So again, something different. It would drive people up there that don't normally go up to the Circle of Progress. Quality Opportunity Zone projects, very important to us, and there is a tremendous amount of interest. Frankly, funders are nervous, because once they release those funds and they pull the gun on those funds, the clock starts ticking. So they have to get those invested quickly into a project. So they have to be absolutely sure before they're going to release those funds. And then attraction and retention of new investment in businesses to downtown. Certainly have built upon that. That was a focus for 2018. It continues into 2019, and we will be supporting those businesses. So that's my report for 2018. There was a lot going on. I hope you will really take a look at the annual report. It's the first really professionally-done annual report that PAE has put out. I think it's important to not only get that information out to stakeholders in the borough, but to stakeholders outside the borough, to really tell the story of what is going on in the borough. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you talk to Representative Cerise about any opportunities for funding? He's working on the budget to submit to the state, so.
Correct. And in fact, last week, I met with Representative Cerise. He does have part of the borough, not all, but he's certainly been made aware of the key project. I know he's been working with Justin. He is in favor of the Restore PA, which I see is on your agenda. And he is supportive. He's very enthusiastic, and I support his enthusiasm. But I also know the realities of the state. I've spent some time with both sides of the aisle, and although there are new players there, there are some stark realities. But one can always be hopeful.
And is this on your website?
That is not on our website.
Am I allowed to take photos of this and post it on Facebook?
You are absolutely allowed to do it, and please share any information where you will notice that there will be more doll shape modeling, the I Pick Pottstown Bananas, which is the new part of the clothing line, that will be rolled out in the Pottstown process launch on June 20, at Sunnybrook Ballroom. So if any of you have not gotten your tickets yet, I encourage you to do so. June 20, 11:30, there will be expo tables. It's the third annual. It is a collaborative venture between Tri-County Area Chamber of Commerce and Pottstown Area Industrial Development, and it is a good day to celebrate Pottstown.
What time is it again?
It starts at 11:30.
It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, transportation. Vice President Colton. In our meeting. Ad-hoc zoning. Counselor Prosskell.
We discussed, you know, changing the drainage requirement for grading from like about 100 to 1,000 square feet, and then we also talked about downtown parking, considering daycares, and also eliminating the need for master plumbers for homeowners. But that is, but they would still be required for commercial properties.
Okay. And the efficient methods committee. Counselor Libidinsky.
Two major bullet points during this meeting were the feedback that we're getting from the department's response to customers has been good. Their time has been, the response time is about a day, sometimes more, depending on what their question is. The other thing is fire sprinkler permits. Fire sprinkler permits are being created using the same type of checklist as we use for permitting, so that's going to streamline that. In general, there has been, any kind of developer complaints seem to go to Justin and the borough manager, and they try and circumbank codes. Ellen and I, and it just goes back to Keith and the codes anyway. So I guess trying to keep Justin out of the loop and just kind of hanging there with Keith, you know, he's burdened and very busy, to hang with him, he'll respond to it.
Very good. Emergency services. Welcome.
Thank you. So I get to give my first report? We're the Borough Fire Department, and we started out with a meet and greet two weeks ago with all the fire companies, and it went very well. We went through the last one year's committee reports I wasn't here, and there was some delays in doing things because they were waiting for the new fire chief. So hopefully in the next month, I'll be able to meet with Justin and some of the other committee people from the borough, and we're going to address some of the issues the fire department had. But other than that, it was a good meet and greet. And the other thing, I just have to say that the transition was really well, and everybody in the borough was a big help to me in getting through this, but especially Joe Groff, who took care of the fire department for a year when there was no fire chief. So I hope we can get in a minute that Joe was a big help to the fire department.
Okay.
For May, we had, I didn't do April, because I came in in the middle of it, and there was some issues with the recording, but it'll be done for June. The whole six months will be done. But in May, we had 94 fire responses. It's a total of 435 for the year. There was 12 calls resulting in $2,900 worth of damage to affect, most of it was vehicle fires. We haven't had anything house fires or building fires, which is good. Our biggest response is deactivated fire alarms due to cooking, and that's one of the initiatives the fire department that they talked about at our meeting, is how we can reduce some of those fire alarms through cooking, through us and campaigns. The fire department had five responses outside the borough, which one of them was a significant call in West Pottstown. We had five community outreach events, and that included Memorial Day. And we're working on our inspection program. We're slowly getting through there. We've had some consultations with some business people that want to come in and explain the new, or not the new, but the fire codes that are required for some of the newer buildings and tenant fit-outs. Anybody have any questions? That's my report. Good seeing everyone. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No, but I'd like to tell you that I was in the parade for Memorial Day, and the trucks looked immaculate. Even the, even the, even the classic and the antique one.
I'm not afraid. There was a lot of work that week going on, all week. Guys and girls, I should say.
Excellent work.
There was a lot of work.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Relations, Ms. Levin, good.
Trying to turn this around. Good evening, councilors, council president, madam mayor. The commission has a vacancy. Anyone who's interested in applying can email your expression of interest and resume to HRC@Pottstown.org. And then June is Gay and Lesbian Pride Month. LGBT Pride is the positive stance against discrimination and violence toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people to promote their self-affirmation, dignity, equality rights, increase their visibility in a social group, build a community, and celebrate sexuality, diversity, and gendered variance. The commission's next meeting will be held Tuesday, June 11, at 6 o'clock in the council meeting room. And then at 6:30, we are going to have an educational presentation on diversity and inclusion by representatives from the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and all are welcome to attend.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry. Has the Human Relations Commission thought about doing a, in the future, a gay pride parade? The reason I'm asking, I've had actually a lot of individuals ask if we would be interested in doing this in Pottstown to celebrate LGBTQ.
Obviously, I am quite familiar as to what it takes to do a parade here in Pottstown. And obviously, it takes funding and money to do that. And obviously, the commission, we don't have any funding whatsoever.
I wasn't asking about funding. I'm just asking about the idea. Have you thought about it?
I mean, anything's possible to do something like that, but obviously, if you want a parade, it involves money and funding.
Thanks.
Land Bank. Ms. Penrod.
Our regularly scheduled May meeting date was a holiday, and I apologize, I missed all of the borough May meetings. At this point, we continue to have a learning curve with our current team members. That includes reading a lot of literature, a couple of classes here and there, contacts with other land banks. We're still trying to find somebody who's an exact reflection of Pottstown, and I don't think we're going to find it. We're also trying to learn the nuances of the candidate properties based on individual situations, based on the borough, the neighborhoods. And I've invited everybody on the land bank to accompany the Blighted Housing Committee on their bus tour, which I think is in a week or two. I cut my teeth, so to speak, on the Blighted Housing Committee and on the Planning Commission, which was just absolutely invaluable for learning a lot about Pottstown, and I would encourage anyone to pursue that. And we also have two vacancies. One is the Twyla, Twyla's first original initial term, I think, which was a short, one-year term, and I believe she has reapplied, and I would encourage her reappointment to that position. And a second position is available due to a resignation, and the aspiring candidate is listed on item 21 for your consideration tonight. And I think that's all at the moment for the land bank.
Okay. While you're there, what's up with the library?
This is a STEM kit. We have about 20 STEM kits at the library. And what the heck is a STEM kit? STEM is science, technology, engineering, math, which is near and dear to my heart. And we have several of these little backpacks that are sent home age-appropriate for kids, just to teach them things. Now, some people might be able to go into a toy store or go onto Amazon and be able to afford to buy six things on a particular topic. The one I brought with me is circuitry. Snap circuits. But if you don't have that luxury, our STEM kits can send some stuff home for your kid to play with, look at, read, handle, fondle, maybe interact with the rest of the family. Actually, I checked this out today, and I'm supposed to have it back tomorrow, so I'm going to work on it all night tonight to see if I can make it work. This teaches electrical wiring. You can make sounds, volume control, flashing laser lights. You can make a fan out of it. I mean, I might have turned out to be something in my life if I'd known how to do circuits earlier, so we'll see. Second thing is we're continuing to outreach, we're continuing outreach activities to our other supporting municipalities in the Pottstowns. COG, I'm going to try, I'm going to invite myself to a COG meeting to make sure that all of the surrounding communities, not just our official service communities, but all of the surrounding communities, understand the benefits that their citizens, their residents, get from the library. I mentioned before that a lot of people come into Pottstown for the library outside our service area that we are not allowed under Pennsylvania state law. Yes, remember, there is Pennsylvania state library law. We can't approach them directly, but they're coming from across the river. They're coming from further south. They're coming over from the Gilbertsville, New Hanover area. And the COG will just let me stand there and say, "Do you have any idea how important your library is, or our library is?" Let's see here. Next, fundraising. I want to make it clear that we are not relying on the charity of our municipalities. We have a fairly active development committee trying to figure out ways to bring in money. Specifically, our recent charity fundraising event, to which several of you came and bid on chairs. Sorry, sorry you didn't get your chair. We made over $7,000 on that, and it was so successful, we've actually already acquired chairs for next year's charity event. We're also in the area of fundraising. We're also stepping up our networking with businesses and other groups in the community. For example, we will be attending the Pottstowns Progress Luncheon with a table at the expo. So if you're there, you better stop in and say hello to me. And then we're also going to more chamber activities, just to familiarize the businesses, not relying so much on the individuals, but to familiarize the businesses of how important the library is to the community. My next item is, it's coming up next year, will be the library's 100th anniversary. We spared you a party for the 100th anniversary of the building. The 100th anniversary of the incorporation of the library will probably be a big deal. And then second, seventh thing, we are, sixth thing, seventh thing. We are closed on the Fourth of July. However, I can highly recommend the steps of the library as the best place to watch the Fourth of July parade in Pottstown. So get there early and claim your space. And on the subject of the parade, it's kind of indirect, but to save you having me come up here later again, if anyone would like to participate in the parade, please let me know or go on to the Rotary website. I believe this is going to be the third year that the Rotary has sponsored the parade, and we have high hopes, and everyone on council will be receiving an invitation to participate in some way or another. I got roped into being a volunteer for that, so you'll hear more from me. That's all.
Question. The STEM kit you're holding, it's for what age?
Eight to 108.
Under eight?
From, from eight.
Oh, from eight.
Up to 108. We have ones that are three years and up. We have, you know, depending on how small the pieces are.
And what would be the donation for that kit?
Purchase this?
Yes.
Oh, man, I don't know. I'm guessing that the, I'm guessing that the entire little kit, probably, I'm going to guess $50. So I mean, $50 would probably get some kind of a STEM kit. More donation would get you either a bigger, better, fancier STEM kit or maybe more than one. But it's an important part of our, of our youth programming.
Great.
Now, are these for children that, like, can anybody take the?
Oh, you gotta have is a library card.
Oh, okay. All right.
And they're checked out just like a book.
Okay.
There's some neat ones. There, I was looking at ones today about snakes and butterflies. There, I was looking at ones today about snakes and butterflies.
So then, when you're done with them, you take them back?
Bring them back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's a library. You just check it out. We also have cake pans, but they're not used a lot.
Neat. Okay, Councilor Kirkland, all of it, boys and girls.
Yes, there's reports in your packet, but I'm going to read a couple tidbits that he sent me. We average over 45 kids per day during our after-school program in May, which represents an increase of more than 20 kids per day compared to our average attendance in May of 2018. We began offering Google CS First Computer Programming classes this month, where the kids use a programming language called Scratch to design their own animations and games. We also continued many of other great programs in May, such as teen weightlifting, torch club, community service, Spanish classes, sign language, and more. Our after-school program for the school year concluded in May 31st, and we are getting ready to begin our summer camp on June 17th.
Good. Thank you. Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay.
So, I know you heard all the buzz about the music department being taken away. So let me just start off that usually the school board meeting is in the cafeteria. It was so many people that they had to move it to the high school auditorium. It was a lot of people there. And my sister even came down from DC to support it, too. She came down. She was actually visiting, but she came with me. And we, when we were there, it was a lot of people that was going to, you know, comment on the music department, but in the beginning, right up front, they said that they were going to keep the music department, and everybody was happy, everybody was cheering, "Yay, ha, 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 yes, we're happening." But there is a next year, so June 12th, just letting you know, June 12th. We have, we still have room on the bus to go to Harrisburg. We actually have three buses now. Last year, when I went to power to Harrisburg for fair funding, there was one bus. This year, we have three. So, we still have room, Councilors. Justin. Parents, kids can come, too. So, parents, yes, you, yes, you sitting at the kitchen, table cooking, I need you to come June 12th. Meet us at the high school, Pottstown High School, at 9:00. That's it.
Do they need to sign up and reserve a seat, or?
There is a sign up. You can actually go on my page, trinita.lindsay on Facebook. You can actually give me a text, you can text me at 484-302-1412, and I can provide you the information.
Right. So you might need four buses.
I would like that.
Good. Thank you. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
I hope you had a good vacation, and it's good to see you back.
I would ask that you bear with me, I am still recovering from back surgery, and it's taking a little longer than I expected. So, I haven't been to, able to come to any of the events lately, so I will let Trinita and Dawn share with you, not now, during your comments about the parades and things that you've been through. For upcoming events, please check Facebook. I will also, and the newsletter from Parks and Rec. I have been working on the Cop Card Program. I've received a couple quotes, I still would like to ask schmails if they would, if they do anything like this to get an estimate, basically for, if we do 100, it's basically between $50 to $100 per officer for our Cop Card Program. That's just kind of the range. For 100 cards, it would be $50, $50 to $60. For 500 cards, we can get them for about $100 an officer. So we're looking at about $4,000 for the Cop Card Program just for printing. And then I need a photographer and someone to help me put together bios of our officers and upload them to the website so that the printing company can print them. They're like baseball cards. So, and fundraising for that, I would like, I need some help contacting businesses to promote this, so they typically will sponsor an officer and pay for the printing and cost of that officer's card, and then they'll get their logo on the back. So that's a way that we can fund this program. I've also been working a little bit on the Our Block Captain Program, which I think I've decided we should rename the Love Your Block Program. I've been putting together some templates and information on what the program can look like based upon what Lancaster City Alliance has done in Philadelphia, but pared-down version. If you go on, you know, their websites, it's just, it's really amazing to see the programs that they've put together for ambassador programs, and cleaning up your block, and block parties, and someone to go to, to who do I call for maintenance issue, infrastructure issue? And it's a ton of information on their website, especially like their easy question and answer on their website, what to do if this happens. Someone stole my trash can. That's like a common question, it's on their website, and it says who to call and when, and gives all of their numbers. So it's, they have really a lot of stuff that we can do. And I'd like to give a big thank you to Howard Brown of the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation. I shared this, my vision with him last year, and he kind of ran with it and started researching all these programs and connecting with other organizations in Pottstown. So we're trying to work to get grants and put together kind of a pilot program for our Block Captain Program, or we can rename it the Love Your Block Program. And I'll be sharing all of this and collaborate with PCA. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend their meeting on Monday, that, which was at the park on Chestnut Street, which I heard was a really nice turnout at Mosaic. I also spoke, and I apologize, I forget his name, he's a retired officer from Malvern, contacted me, he's in a group that raised, they just presented a check to Operation Backpack for $70,000. That he, with this group, and again, apologize, I don't know the name, he's going to email me, in three weeks, he and his group fundraised and made $70,000, which to me is a lot of money for, and I, Operation Backpack is really near and dear to my heart. If you don't know what it is, look it up. It feeds and a lot of our students in the borough, and a lot of our students depend on it. A $70,000 check in three weeks is pretty amazing. So I'm going to look into what hits, what they did and how they were able to fundraise, so we can share that with Peggy and everyone else, so we can get some funds into the borough. And I think that is all. I apologize, I am behind on emails and responding to phone calls, but I get to you, if it's an emergency, call Ginny, Ginny will track me down. If it's a police emergency, call 911. Hopefully, I will be back to 110% next week. Thank you.
Great. Hey, Borough Manager, what's happening in the house?
All right, so on the grants front, we did submit a application to DCD through their flood mitigation grant program for $500,000 to address some of our failing stormwater arch structures. And we also, if you recall, a while back, we awarded the Ricketts Community Center Roof Rehabilitation and HVAC Units Award. That contract is about $119,000 over budget, so we're looking for grant funds to try to close that gap. We did submit a Monco 2040 grant that was denied, but we still have another request into the community development block grant program that we should be finding out about soon. So hoping to gather up some more funds towards that, towards that project. It's looking at this point that we would issue a notice to proceed sometime in June to the contractor, but it's going to take a number of weeks for some of the air conditioning units to be ordered. So I don't have a date yet for when that project would actually go to construction, but it would still be on schedule for this year at some point. Couple events coming up this month, we have Trails on Tap coming June 26th to the 30th in Riverfront Park. So what this is going to be is a mobile beer garden that goes to Pottstown and four other locations during the month of June and July. Pottstown is the first stop along the trail, and we encourage everyone to come out so that we can have a good attendance that night. And they're also going to be offering kayak and bike rentals, as well as some pedal and paddle events in conjunction with that mobile beer garden. However, you will have to have your beer after you rent the bike and kayak.
Yeah, I was going to say, police chief, you may need to get some extra police officers because, and some divers.
And then, to open up the month of July, we have the Go4th event coming up in Memorial Park, which is expected to be a pretty spectacular show. I was at the Leadership Breakfast this morning, and they are getting very close to raising the amount that they need for the event, courtesy of some generous donations that were made this morning. And everything is on track. There will be some changes to the way that alcohol is consumed for this event. And if you recall, in prior events, the Go4th Festival only allowed alcohol consumption within a beer tent that was 30 feet by 50 feet area or so. Council did approve alcohol in the park as, in the approval of this, of this event. And they're going to be coming in with a exhibition permit, which is essentially a state permit that would allow them to create a designated area, a larger area, which will encompass the lower ball field and the concert area for the event where you can purchase and carry your alcohol. You will need a wristband, there will be checking IDs, there will be a fence around the perimeter of that lower ball field, and signs letting people know that there is to be no alcohol beyond that point, or else they could be subject to the borough's open container laws. So that was a change, and I hope to make it a little more all-inclusive event this year. The Hanover Street Bridge, you've seen that on the west side, there's some sidewalk construction going, going on there, they're demolishing the existing sidewalk and putting in an eight-foot new sidewalk. That should be happening in the next week or so, and that's all as a part of PennDOT's closed-loop Signal Project that that work is being done under. The authority water and sewer bids were awarded at their meeting last month, so that's $1.5 million in infrastructure that's going to be going into the ground and into the pipes and into paving streets in the borough. The airport hangar and taxiway paving project is currently underway at the moment. PICO has started their underground conduit replacement for the streetlights on High Street. They're down, they're down near Madison Street at this point, and then they'll be moving further west in the coming weeks. We did have a meeting with the Parking Committee to see how some of the parking changes are going. There weren't a whole lot of recommendations for changes from what we're doing now, other than lifting the three-hour time limit. So look for more information to come on that, because I believe we would need an ordinance change to effectuate that. We're also meeting with a subcommittee of the Housing Coalition to talk about how we can better address some of the bulk trash issues that we're having in the borough, and just some of the trash issues that we're having in general, and, you know, the dissatisfaction of service that we're getting from Mascaro. So the trash contract is up for renewal this year, so we are working with them to get all the things in there to ensure that we can get better service, and also provide our customers with some level of bulk pickup, whether it's one item per week or one item per month. It's something that I think that we need to look into at this point. We're also looking at whether or not, if we have to follow around Mascaro to make sure that they're doing their job, we want our staff to be compensated for that. So that is another thing we will look at incorporating into the contract. And then, just an update, due to the next month's committee of the hole falling on July 3rd, we will not be meeting on that date. Instead, the agenda for July will be combined into one meeting on Monday, July 8th, which is our regularly advertised council meeting.
Very good. You want to mention the sojourn?
Yes.
I saw you there last night.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I forgot the sojourn. That really kicked off the month. We had about 100 campers in the park last night. I think Commissioner Lawrence joined them this morning for their paddle out to Royersford. There was, there was, there was music and food, and a really good time for people that don't, wouldn't otherwise normally come to town. I had the opportunity to tell them about all the great things that are going on here, and ask them to come back and check us out in the future, so.
Right. I was surprised with the number of people in attendance that had never been to Pottstown before, but heard about this, and then it just expanded from there. Hey, you can do this, you can do that, we have walked off.
Absolutely.
It was great. Thank you.
Justin, did the mural get finished by any chance?
It did.
Oh, it did?
Yes, it is finished, it looks, it looks very beautiful, and there's a lot of interesting stories within the artwork itself. Some different images or themes that were meaningful to people in one way or another somehow made it into that mural, into that, into that tessellation. So it's really neat, and it really incorporates kind of the fabric of our community very well.
I saw it, it wasn't done yet, I saw it a couple weeks ago, and she was asking for, for volunteers, because they needed to finish it, but it was absolutely gorgeous. So if you haven't seen it, I'm glad it got finished and she got the volunteers, go see it. It looks really cool, it's like, it looks like you're on water.
Right.
And the images are gorgeous. Thanks.
Good. Okay, how about the park operating budget?
Yeah, so this is the annual park operating budget that we request from council every year, that they certify the local operating match. This year's operating match is $94,281, which is paid for through contributions from Montgomery and Chester Counties. So there's no outlay historically to the borough for this match.
Okay. And the contract extension?
Yeah, so we're requesting to continue the contract under the same terms and conditions as the present agreement for a period of one year, to expire on June 30th, 2020. So as you know, the borough itself doesn't run the park buses, we contract that out to a company that runs them for us.
All right, and we'll list that for Monday. Ricketts Center lease.
Yeah, so as many, many are aware, we've had some robust discussions with two groups wishing to operate the Ricketts Community Center. And I think as a result of this process, there have been many ideas and suggestions on ways to improve the services and programming provided at the center that came from both groups, as well as from the community at large. And I think in an effort to better serve the community, it would be fitting for council to incorporate a number of the recommended improvements into a new lease agreement, regardless of who will be selected to run the center. So it's recommended that council incorporate the following concepts as part of a new lease agreement with any group. The operator The operator of the center should be required to establish a set schedule for opening the center on, on weekends. Likewise, the schedule for weekday hours should be specified. The lease term should be shortened from its current five-year term to allow other groups the opportunity to submit proposals for the center on a more condensed timeline. And at this point, I can turn it over to our, for our solicitor, if there are any points that you have to add, and then following that, we'll just open it up for a general discussion by council.
As, as Justin said, the, the point of the agenda item here tonight isn't really to determine who's going to operate the center next year. Under our existing lease, it allows the borough to make suggested changes to the lease once the end of the first term occurs. Our window to do that is by June 30th. So what Justin has indicated is staff recommendation based upon what he's heard from the community is that those types of changes should be made to the current document. We need to communicate that, those changes to the Olivettes or whoever ultimately runs the center by June 30th. So that's the point of what we want to talk about. Justin, I think the other thing that was, was talked about in some detail was to not necessarily increase, but maintain or potentially lessen the funding that was offered to the center, because right now there's a provision that almost guarantees a certain minimum level of funding. But I think from what I've heard from, from staff and from the finance department is that we don't necessarily have a lot of money to continue to, to increase that amount. So whatever, if you agree with these recommendations, we would need you to vote on Monday to allow staff to send a letter to the Olivettes saying, these are the proposed changes we'd like to see to the agreement. And that would start the dialogue either with Olivettes or the Strive Organization, depending upon who, who you decide to have the center operate under.
How long is the lease? Because you said, what is it now, five years?
It was five, yeah.
And then what would you?
It's a five-year term currently.
There's, there's a five-year term, but there's the right to renew for like eight different renew, five-year renewals. So we're, we're talking about the five-year term, shrinking that from five years to potentially three or four.
Okay.
So again, you can still get out of it before all of those extensions, but we're just looking at a smaller window rather than five years, make it three, four, something that's a little shorter in time. But again, that's up to you.
Okay. So it don't have to necessarily be three or five? It could be two?
It could be whatever, it could be whatever council wants.
Okay.
I, I think in the past, Trinita, the, the issue was to get someone in there to really invest in it. They were looking for a period of time, and at least back in 2014, five years seemed like the operative time.
Right.
It may not be five years anymore. It may be something less than that.
Okay, thank you.
I know one thing that the, that the, the people's been talking about for a long time, and I don't think this is something you put in, in the mandate, but maybe more of a program issue whenever the person is established or the group is established. But the, for a long time, the community's been looking for people who are going to operate the center, who's going to incorporate more programs that has to do with families. They have a lot of programs for kids, they have a lot of programs, they have programs for adults, but there's not a lot of programs for the combination. And that's one thing the community's been asking for, for a long time, and hopefully whoever takes over, they would incorporate something, something like that to.
These are the things we'd like to, the language we'd like to add to the contract, regardless who operates it.
Right.
They're both under the same conditions.
Justin, I'm sorry if you already said this. Is there an addendum to the current lease that, that shows like programming provisions?
Like an, an appendix, you mean?
Right. I didn't see, I don't, I don't think it's actually in the lease at all, but I know, I wasn't sure if there was a side agreement to, that it was incorporated to that as to programming and other requirements that you wouldn't really necessarily want to put in a lease, but something that the borough wants to see for the actual day-to-day operations for the mission that's in our current lease.
The, the answer, right, the answer is no. It's not, not in the lease for the exact agreement, reason you said there, too difficult to write in, what might the programmings be?
I didn't, I, we don't have like a separate addendum that we require, okay.
You would, you would have to ask Parks and Rec. I'm sure, I'm sure they are provided a copy of the programming, but I'm sure that's fluid, so.
Is that something that, that you're interested in?
Possibly.
Is that what you're asking? Because it can't be actually in the lease.
Right, right.
But it's like an, an addendum that the parties can agree as to, these are the kind of programmings that we'd like to see.
However, form, whatever form is presented, as long as whoever takes over knows that this is something that the community wants.
But it would need to be done in lease if you want that, like an addendum.
Yeah. However it's presented, it's fine, yeah. Addendum's fine.
Okay. We, we'd like to come to some agreement by Monday evening. I'm going to ask, could you send each of the councillors a list of the suggested changes?
Yes.
And, or change in, in language? And they can either respond to you individually, or we'll discuss it Monday.
Absolutely.
One, good. Anything else? All right. Eleven, Specialty Chemical Systems for 283 Shoemaker Road.
Yeah, you want me to take it?
Yeah.
This is a, a land development. Essentially, it's a redevelopment of an existing site up on Shoemaker Road. I believe the request is to modify the existing parking arrangement and add two additional storage buildings. The current parcel is developed with a building and a parking area, and I think the parcel's about 10 acres in size. The applicant came before the Borough Planning Commission. The Planning Commission made a recommendation that the plan be approved. The standard or usual stipulations were recommended by the Planning Commission, compliance with the Cedarville Letter of May 9th, and I think you have a copy of that in your packet, compliance with the Montgomery County Planning Commission Comment Letter. That was, I believe, May 13th. The Planning Commission recommended a, a payment of a fee in lieu of open space and also an additional $6,000 payment of a fee based upon the fact that they're recommending waiver of a sidewalk that would normally go the whole front of the property. I don't believe any other properties up there have any sidewalk. So those were the specific recommendations of the Planning Commission. Dan, you can weigh in if there's anything else.
No, I confirm everything. I'm confirming everything you said.
And I think the applicant engineer is here this evening, correct? Is there anything else that you wanted to provide to council as far as what happened at the?
You summed it up perfectly. I'm just here in case there are any questions.
Okay. I'm sure the engineer has, has a plan if you want to see it, but it's really just a kind of a redesign of the existing lot. There are two additional, I guess, storage buildings that are being created, and the parking is being reconfigured.
Yes.
Okay. So the, the request through planning is that there is a $6,000 fee in lieu of sidewalk, if you will, and the option is to request a fee for open space if, if you desire.
And, and frankly, there's no reason you would take any open space dedication on your parcel anyway, so the fee would be the, the likely thing.
Correct.
In discussion with Justin and staff, I know that the borough's been looking at potential traffic enhancement up in that area. So I don't know that you would have any objection that the $6,000 be used to some type of traffic improvement in that vicinity of the borough. Is that fair to say?
Yes, the applicant agreed to that fee at the Planning Commission meeting. How the township chooses to use it is, it's up to you.
It, it will help you with your traffic flow in the future.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for obviously developers that can help us fund some type of better traffic situation in the vicinity of, of your lot, and we're trying to get a fund together to, to consider options, so.
Okay, and the fee for open space?
That, that would have to be calculated. I think under the ordinance based upon the engineer's letter, there is like a quarter of an acre that's required for an open space dedication, so we would just equate that to a per dollar value per acre, so. Well, I'll give you a call or email you before Monday. Is that okay?
Very good.
Any, any other questions from council on the project?
Okay. We'll list this for action Monday evening. Twelve is Portnoyoff, the collection of delinquent municipal assessments. This is a renewal, Justin?
Yes, this is an extension of, of the term of agreement for two years. It would be under the same conditions of the, of the previous agreement. And Portnoyoff is the, the agency that we use to collect our delinquent taxes and utility bills.
And would you tell the rest of council our appraisal, their performance?
Yeah, I mean, so far we've had a much better collection rate and much better results with them. It's, there's been a lot quicker turnaround time by using Portnoyoff as opposed to using the county. I think the county has made some recent improvements, but maybe something that I think we might want to revisit in a couple of years.
Okay. And I think this is limited only to the delinquent assessments, municipal assessments, not necessarily taxes.
Correct.
Correct?
Right. When items like this come up, where a contract or agreement is, is, is up, is up for renewal, do we actively look for other suitors or, or do we just, just systematically accept the person who's there and just go with the flow? I mean, do, do, do we look for other suitors, other people to, to bid on, not to bid, but to?
Yeah, it depends on what it is. In, in most cases, we do try to go out at least every, every five years to see what other, what other services might be, might be out there. With this one, I don't, I don't know that we've, we've, we've done that. It's kind of one of those things where we've been happy with their, with their service and their, and their results, and we haven't seen a need to change. It doesn't really cost us any, anything.
Okay.
I mean, there may be some nominal fees involved with it, but most of that is passed on to the person that hasn't, you know, paid their past due bill.
Yeah, just, you know, the thing I would say is, is just, is just keep in mind in the future, when things like this come up, you know, always try to see if there's another option out there.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's my only.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that was kind of my, the point that I was making when I suggested the county, because the county can do it as well, and we actually sat down with their office, and I had our finance director call some of the other municipalities that are using the county to see what their, what their results have been, what their experience has been with the county, and, and I would say it, it still isn't quite as good as what we have with Portnoyoff, so we were comfortable with, with staying with them.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll list this for Monday evening. Thirteen is Resolution to Restore the PA Infrastructure Improvement Plan.
Yeah, so we're requesting council support of the Governor's Restore PA Initiative, which is currently subject of state budget discussions. This four-year, 4.5 billion dollar funding source would be funded through a natural gas severance tax, and it's aimed at restoring high-impact community development and infrastructure projects with a focus on storm preparedness, business development, revitalization, and transportation projects. The environmental elements include funding for flood damage reduction and maintenance of stormwater facilities that would be applicable to addressing the borough's underground stormwater arches. So we're asking that council sends in their resolution requesting that this gets passed by the state.
Very good. No questions, we'll list that for Monday. Fourteen is Revision to the Downtown Ordinance. Mr. Garner.
If you, if you recall, last month, you had voted to allow us to move forward with some what we consider somewhat minor changes to the downtown zoning ordinance, and you should have in front of you in your packet, the proposed actual ordinance. This is somewhat being fast-tracked because council wanted to move this along, and in order to get a public hearing scheduled for our meeting in July, we kind of pushed everything into the document. So just to go over briefly what we're looking to do, and again, many of these came out of, I guess, the ad hoc zoning. There was some question about the, the definition of downtown dining, so we've tried to tweak that to, to take care of the concerns that were being raised with that definition. There was recommendation to eliminate daycare facilities in the downtown district. There was also a provision in, in the existing downtown ordinance that provided for separation distances between certain uses such as taverns and bars from others' taverns and bars and schools and churches, and I think the recommendation was to remove that separation distance from, from the document. I think the ordinance that you have in front of you, it takes care of everything that has been talked about, and in talking with Justin, I think there may be other changes coming, but at this point, I think we need to get something finalized if you really want to have that public hearing in July to make the changes. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Justin, I'm sure you can answer any questions as well.
Yeah.
And Ryan, you're part of the ad hoc, so.
I can try to, I want to provide just a little bit more detail, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on any of these, Chuck, but basically for the, the ordinance amendment for outdoor dining, we, we wanted to remove the 15-foot setback to bus stops. In the current ordinance, the outdoor dining area had to be set back 15 feet from the bus stops. We have a lot of bus stops downtown, so this, this became problematic almost instantly to some of the businesses that wanted to have outdoor, outdoor dining. And then it also, I think, redefines outdoor dining to, to just the outside areas that are located on a public sidewalk or publicly accessible area. I'm not sure that that was really clear. We were getting questions, I think, like if someone did that in the rear of their property, whether or not they needed to apply for a permit, so hopefully that answers this question, and they would not need a permit in that case. And then this would also allow for outdoor dining in, in other districts such as the neighborhood business, Gateway West and East, and the highway business districts.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with everything he said. I think originally the downtown outdoor dining provision was talking about having sidewalk cafes and things like that on the sidewalk, more so in public areas as opposed to, you know, in private property and setback where you're not interfering with any sidewalk pedestrians or things like that. So I think the intent is to try and clarify that, so there's not any confusion as to what is intended by virtue of the, the outdoor dining definition.
Counselor Levitt, is.
So do you want to set up a right-of-way for pedestrians at a fixed space instead of using the 15 feet, for example, so that the, the business owners don't get too overzealous with the space that they want to take on the, on the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we have, so under our, we already have that in our sidewalk ordinance. In our sidewalk ordinance, it says that we, that property owners have to maintain a 36-inch wide.
Okay, because I, I scanned through it and I didn't see it.
Yeah. No, but it's a good question, because it came up a lot, and, and they have to maintain a 30, a minimum 36-inch clear pedestrian way through their site. But we didn't want to get in the business of telling them where that pedestrian way had to be located, because all the sites were, were different, and we think that they're going to use, you know, common sense, so that it's going to connect to the pedestrian area adjacent to them. And, and, you know, if it doesn't, I think it'll, we don't have so many of these that we wouldn't be able to address that individually with the property owners if it did happen.
Okay, thank you.
Doc, one of the, one of the problems, I guess, is when, when we put together an ordinance amendment, you're only looking at the changes, you're not seeing the entire body of ordinance, and the provision Justin was talking about actually is referred to in the ordinance you guys passed back in January of 2018 that required that, the clear, the clear distance.
Okay, that's fine.
So you're just, right, I appreciate the, the question and the inquiry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. What was the reasoning behind eliminating the daycare businesses downtown?
I, I.
It had to do with concerns about parking and adequate parking for some of the facilities that were already there, and I think Mr. Place had some concerns about just the use downtown and competing issues with parking.
You mean pulling up and picking up and dropping?
And just total number of spaces as well.
And I just want to add that regarding the setback, that the 500-foot setback from similar uses, churches or schools, this just really wasn't working, and it was deterring many of the smaller tasting rooms and beer gardens that do not produce product on-site. And, you know, that's, that's really the, one of the niches that we're going to be able to be attractive to, I think, as we've already had several of these set up or in the process of being. set up.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll list this for Monday. Fifteen is in ordinance amendments, the water and sewer specifications.
So this change was approved by the Borough Authority at their May meeting, and it was revised to allow splice connections on existing water laterals. Also, it looked at requirements for pressure reduction valves on new installations, changes the validation of bulk water permits to a period of one year, a fee determined by the Borough Authority and their fee schedule, and other miscellaneous cleanup items, along with updated detail plates to incorporate the set changes.
Those specifications are really, really interesting, so you might want to look at them very carefully before we authorize that advertisement of the ordinance. You don't like reading about plumbing?
We had to consult a couple of local plumbers to help us write those specifications, so...
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Zoning, Keystone Industrial Corporation at 861 Cross Street. Change of use.
Yeah, we received an application that was submitted to the zoning hearing board seeking a use variance for the property at 861 Cross. This is a heavy manufacturing zoning district, and the applicant is requesting to use the space for a silent auction of antiques and collectibles that currently is not a permitted use in that district. So they've asked for a variance from the zoning hearing board. It's a rather isolated portion of town. I'm not sure there's a lot of residents necessarily in that vicinity. Unless council has real heartburn with it, I would recommend that the zoning hearing board hear the case and make the decision on the merits of what's presented. But certainly, if anyone feels that that's not proper, you could send a letter in opposition or in support of, if you chose...
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that, you know, that this is looked upon favorably. I mean, this is a building that's been vacant for a number of years. It's a tough site. It sits across the street from Pollock Park. And, you know, it's just been a longtime neglected property that's become a dumping ground for certain elements of the community. And it would be nice to get someone in there that is going to clean it up and put some sort of activity in the building.
I will ask that we list it for Monday evening, and I would also ask that you consider approving it. Sounds like a good use for that isolated building and property. Okay. Sixteen, seventeen, zoning, West Pottstown Shopping Center at 121 Shoemaker Road.
Yeah, this is another request to the zoning hearing board. In this case, what the property owner would like to do is add a building addition on to the back of their property. As a result of the building addition, the setback, both from the rear yard and the side yard, would be reduced less than the ordinance permits. So again, this is something that would go to the zoning hearing board. Typically, you wouldn't take a position unless you felt strongly one way or the other. It is dimensional relief. I also think it's in an area around that shopping center that it really impacts nobody, because it's all businesses in there, kind of isolated. But that's up to council.
It's the other side?
I think we determined it's the other side when we looked at the map.
It says here on this, from the attorneys, it says, yeah, Federal Express Overnight, is that what, or what is that?
That's how it was sent.
Is that how it was sent? Okay. I was just curious...
On the letter from Rose McGinnis?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just how it was sent.
How it was sent, yeah, there's, yeah, there's no change in use, it's just a setback based upon a building addition, that's all.
Okay, and they don't have anybody going in there? I guess they haven't said why they're expanding.
I don't think we have any information on that at this point, Carol.
I don't know if you've seen the sketch, it's between the back of Ollie's and the back of Pepboy's.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll list this for Monday. Eighteen, Kingdom Life Church on Walnut Street.
Okay, we have a request for a street closure on June 30th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they are requesting use of the street to move their Sunday morning services outside. And I assume that they're requesting the closure of Walnut Street. We'll have staff check into that to make sure. Yeah, I believe it is Walnut Street, because all the signatures that they got were people on Walnut Street. And it is only one block.
What's the hundred block again?
The Kingdom Life Church.
Oh, okay. I think I know. Yeah.
It don't say it on here. The one that 380, one that...
380 Walnut Street, yeah.
Okay. That's right next to Warren, right?
No, it's actually, it's right down, it's basically on my block. They want to close North Franklin Street between Walnut and Rowan Alley. And then they're on the corner of North Franklin and Walnut Street. Yeah, it's Justin Valentine's Church.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, I just said that council is aware, streets in the downtown being closed on a Sunday was one of the reasons that the local churches kind of came out and asked that the bike race be relocated to the east end. So, because they were citing the street closures as being problematic for their parishioners, they kind of got together and requested the bike race be moved. You know, despite that, our EIP report recommendations for encouraging downtown events that are key to our economic revitalization, I'm not certain if this church was a party to that request, but you'll see next month that we have another request from a downtown church to close the street on a Sunday.
Do we have a list of the churches that were part of it?
We, I could find out.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll list this. Nineteen, redding gravity races back to Wilson Street.
Yeah, so this is the gravity racing, July 14th, between 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Wilson Street. There is a rain date of July 28th, 2019.
Okay, we'll list that. Twenty, Sly Fox Track Club Half Marathon at the Circle of Progress.
They are, Sly Fox is requesting a street closure. There's a lot of streets involved with this, but really, the only one that would impact us would be College Drive, Keystone Drive, West High Street, and that, and Circle of Progress and Glasgow. So that would be 15th of December, 2019, from 8:30 to 12:30 p.m.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Twenty-one, we have board vacancies. There's one on the EAC and two vacancies for the land bank.
Yeah, we do have two applicants for the land bank. We have attorney Michael Maggar, and then Twyla Fisher, who is seeking reappointment as well. Just received her letter today.
Okay. Nothing else about comments from the citizens present? None? Okay. How about comments from the councilors? Counselor Kirkland?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Counselor Paez?
You do.
Counselor Lindsey?
I give it all the thanks.
Nothing?
Right.
What a surprise.
Okay, no, I do have something. Wait a minute, wait a minute. So it's short this time, because I had a lot of gender reveal parties in Washington, D.C., so I had to go home the all, last month. But anyway, I went to the Still River Playhouse. They had an event there and just stating what they were doing, and Justin went there. And we went, that was the May, pardon, May. Talked about the school board meeting, June 12th. I don't know what we said about that. Oh, Joe Cerusi had a shredding event last Saturday, I think it was. Anyway, I went there, and I was, hm? Oh, okay. And I was thinking, maybe we can have one, but I'll talk to Justin later about that one. And I went to both car shows, one downtown Pottstown and the other one in Coventry. And I went to the Pottstown Carnival that was in...
In the Upper?
Upper, yeah, thank you. Upper Potsboro. That was nice. And they said that was their first time having something there, and they had fireworks. That was good. And Dawn and I was in the parade, and we didn't know that, once we parked our car, we had to walk back, so we had to walk back. I was so tired, I swear I found, lost 50 pounds when I was walking back. But it was nice. My grandbaby, my daughter and my grandchildren were there, and they got to sit in the car. And we were walking, and it wasn't a casual walk. It was almost like a...
They often do a ride down, but then they make you walk back.
Right. It was, but it was fun. We had a good time, and we waved, and we seen our constituents and everything. It was nice. We had a good time. We had a good time. That's it. See?
Counselor Levitsky.
Concerning the parade, I really enjoyed the atmosphere. I wish there was more people that came out and showed up and just even watch it. Now, I heard that the Fourth of July parade is much bigger.
Much.
Draws more people. But it's still part of, you know, the town, and it gets people into town. And I think what, as a community, maybe we should do is start considering chain events or joint events. If you have a parade, you know, have some sort of carnival or something afterwards or in conjunction with or on the weekend of that brings people back and keeps them in town. I think that might be something that, if we focused on as a community and to consider to have like a chain event like that, and it doesn't even have to be a parade, it could be, you know, Pottstown Rumble, and then in the square, right out here out front, you know, have one of your White Night Events or, you know, some gluten-free expo or something like that. It doesn't matter. The point is, is that you want to bring people in, you want to keep them here. And I think that's probably our, would be our best one-two punch.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Vice President called.
Now, schools are out, are just about out, and I've noticed, which I think is a good thing, a lot of kids outside playing and riding bikes. So I think it'd be good if everyone would be aware of the children that are out there running around now. And I'd like, I'd like seeing kids outside playing and not just inside on computers and games. It's a good thing.
Counselor Prochel.
Well, of course, my family enjoyed Memorial Day Parade as well. And don't worry, Trinita, my wife and I will take the bus down on the 12th, too. Probably one of the more important things I could do on council to help our budget situation.
Thank you.
Do what we can.
Mayor Hendry.
So if you're interested in helping out with volunteering your services and talents to me to help with the cop car program, just call me and leave a message, and I'll get back to you. Don't forget, The Farm started, and that is in Smith Family Plaza. June 1st was the first night, and it's going to be every other week. So it's on Saturdays now from 9:00 to noon. The next date is June 15th. Keith, are you going to go to that one? And the following one is June 29th. Pottstown Rumble, obviously, is a huge event in the borough. There's going to be tons of advertising, or is tons of advertising. It's June 21st through the 23rd. And you can find all of this information on the Parks and Rec Newsletter that is on our borough website, in addition to Facebook and the our borough website. And the car show is back, and they're sponsored by Red Horse, right, Trinita? And it's the first Saturday of every month now, 5 to 9.
Correct.
And that's it, so, thanks.
I was at the car show, and fortunate for us, we did not have rain on the first Saturday in June. It was a wonderful event, hundreds of cars there. And what did we hear this morning? There were over 2,000. They did a survey of the crowd, there were over 2,000 people attending the car show. And we're inviting everybody to come back and also bring someone with you.
Can I add something about the events real quick? Just since that seems to be a common theme. And actually, it is something that we are working on, trying to take these marquee events that we have, like the parades and the car shows, and trying to direct other people that want to do smaller events, whether they're related or not, you have that critical mass, you have those eyeballs there, you know, you can get more people to your event if you partner with this one. So really, I have to thank Pade and the Tri-County Chamber, because in the vacuum of Padea, they've really stepped up to help get everyone together. It's the first Monday of every month at 10 o'clock at Pade's offices, we meet to discuss the upcoming events, how we can make them better, how we can drive more events specifically to the downtown, too. I mean, that's the other thing that we're looking at. What other events can we, you know, take from other places and drive them into the downtown where our businesses are? So there's two short and intermediate-term efforts that we're working on in that regard. We're looking at expanding the events around the car show this year. And then we're looking at potentially another big event in the downtown in October. And then also, we are going to be putting up as a temporary step, some yard signs for the Rumble and for the Go Forth that are going to be, that are going to direct people to the downtown dining and attractions, just so that they know that it's there and there's something to offer with a website link where they can find more information. Then in the longer term, we're working with School River Greenways to create a pedestrian wayfinding signage plan that we have pretty much designed, and we have it partially funded, which will basically do a figure eight from Memorial Park down to Riverfront Park, with downtown being in the middle of that whole system. So it was very poignant that many of the councilors brought that up, because it is something that we're already looking into. Sorry to...
No, it's all right. And to piggyback on that, probably the largest attendance coming up is June 21st, the Rumble. At that time, you know, whether you need more bicycles or jetties or rickshaws to move the people from the park to downtown, that's, that would be great.
Right.
Okay.
And the Carousel has their first Fridays. They have the first Friday of every month, the Carousel. They have something going on every Friday.
Okay, so we're thankful the car show is back, they're doing well. And I also wanted to mention, and I was in a meeting this morning where we were discussing the sojourn, you know, hundreds of people were down there with their kayaks and canoes, and they were camping out overnight, and it was, it was just great. And one of these years, I'm going to have time that I can join them.
Is there a way for people to, and I know we talked about this before, with our calendar on the website, there's two. There's one that's called Event Calendar, which doesn't, there's nothing on that. And then there's the Borough Calendar, what's our events on that? So is there a way to, what's the Event Calendar for?
That was a calendar that was taken over by PottstownFamilies.org that's run by the school district.
That was the shared calendar that...
Yeah, which they still have, maintain it to a certain degree, but it's more school district oriented, I think, but...
Is there a way for...
The main Borough Calendar is the one we'd want to follow.
Is there a way for people to email ahead of time, maybe, their events? I know that, we don't have like a full-time website person, but, because if you look, it would be nice to have, here's the June calendar, and here's, you know, everything that's going on on this...
Absolutely, everything going on in the borough.
On this day, but you can't, obviously... On this day, but you can't, obviously, put everything on for every single event, but like big ones, so that people can see and then try to plan their event. Okay, this is coming up, I'm going to ask to put my event on this day because it corresponds to this.
Certain anchors, certain anchor functions that we have, like Pottstown Rumble, the parades and things like that, that people could look at and target Memorial Day.
I'm just asking about putting it on account.
Right, but that's, having a system like that would be perfect, because then any potential investors that want to come in could look at that easily.
That's one of our projects that I want to work on, so we can talk offline, but I was just wondering, how do you?
Yeah, you need a part-time person to manage that, is what you need.
So, someone else, no one's emailing in to say these are the events?
Well, not only that, but you have to prompt these organizations to give you the information, because it's not always something they think of, especially at first. It really requires somebody keeping up to speed on it and following up and entering that information, and it's something that I tried to start when I was the Regional Recreation Coordinator. We did start that, but the priorities changed because that was taking up a lot of my time.
Do we have any volunteers, maybe? We have kids graduating from high school, anyone who's looking to help out, if you could contact the borough, that would be really helpful.
Good idea.
To work on a shared calendar.
Okay, we will be going to executive session. We have three topics, one is personnel, one is collective bargaining, and one issue with real estate. We will not be making any decisions and will not be coming back, so meeting adjourned.
you're telling me? That's the plan, so we can, there is a way to put them in little areas around Edgewood Cemetery and the airport, I don't know, that may be a liability at the airport, but.
May I borrow them from Y U R?
Yes, you can.
We only go have one go?
No, we are.
Several?
Ask Justin.
Oh, ask Justin.